I'd like to call this meeting of the Yuba City City Council for September 15th, 2020, to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Harris. Vice Mayor Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Espandola.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
At this time, I would like to have our city attorney please read the closed session items.
Thank you, Mayor Proctor. There was no recordable action taken in closed session.
Okay, any public comment on the closed session items?
None received.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close the closed session. Actually, we should have done that earlier. And we will call to order the regular meeting. I have a statement to read. The governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19, also known as the coronavirus. The governor also issued an executive order N-33-20, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are the top priority for the city of Yuba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. This meeting is utilizing a go-to webinar application for a live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the questions functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On desktop computers, the questions section of the app is located at the bottom of the go-to webinar panel that is on the right side of your screen. On mobile devices, there is a question mark on the bottom toolbar that opens the questions screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the questions portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed or the item has been discussed by council and voting on, no more, and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. Okay, at this time, I would ask Pastor Dan Callahan from the First Baptist Church of Yuba City to provide us with invocation and inspiration. Please stand.
Let's pray. Father, we come to you this evening, Lord, with heavy hearts, and, Lord, with a city council that has made a lot of decisions, Lord, that I'm sure were tough. Lord, but I pray that you continue to guide them, direct them. Lord, continue to protect them and give them wisdom as they make decisions that don't just affect us, but those around us, our families. Lord, continue to give them wisdom, protect their families, Lord, especially during this difficult time when decisions have to be made. Lord, I just pray that you continue to help and guide us and direct us in your will and your way. Lord, help our first responders, Lord, especially during this difficult day and age when they've got decisions to make in such a quick way. Lord, I pray that you just guide them, give them wisdom, or protect their families. Lord, give them comfort and safety. And, Lord, we do ask that you would protect those who are fighting our fires here in our state, Lord, especially what's going on around us. Or we just, we honestly ask you to send rain that would quench these fires. And, Lord, give us just calm and assurance. Lord, with all this going on around us, we pray for your presence and your guidance. Lord, give us a continued steadfastness, especially in the city council and those in leadership in our city. Or we're thankful for their steadfastness, their wisdom, as the past several months have been, I'm sure, difficult, not only in their lives, but also in their families. Lord, continue to give them guidance and wisdom. We love you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Fire Chief Alexander, would you please lead us in the pledge?
...to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're moving to agenda modifications and seeking approval of the agenda. We will be moving item number six, which deals with the Selective Traffic Enforcement Program Grant, will be moved to business for a public hearing. Are there any other agenda modifications? Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Agenda is approved. Ceremonial presentations. Our first ceremonial presentation is the National Hispanic Heritage Month, and I believe they're coming in.
Yeah, they are, and they may be moved out there. You should be, you should be online.
So if we can have you sort of in the distance right out here in front, right?
Oh, okay. They're attempting, they're...
Do you want this one up too?
Yeah, if I get that, then the other, I'll be called. Yeah, sometimes.
Right?
Like right here?
Do you want to cut it down?
Yeah, as long as I can see the question.
Okay. These are, these are a little strange to set up logistically, but I'm glad you're all are here tonight. Please welcome, from the Alliance for Hispanic Advancement, we have President Vera Correa. They're on the end. We have founder and board members Margaret Fernandez, Ann Fletcher, and David Gonzalez. We have founder and secretary Debbie Porquio. We have founder and parliamentarian David Perez. He couldn't make it. And, of course, we have our own council member Grace Esmondola with us this evening. National Hispanic Heritage Month. This month, we honor the rich heritage of the Hispanic community and celebrate its countless achievements. The Alliance for Hispanic Advancement, H.A., was established in 1992 by 15 local Hispanic Latino business leaders and concerned community members. Their mission is to be leaders in proving the quality of life for people of Hispanic heritage in our local communities. They have accomplished their mission through community action, education enhancement, and economic development. The following are a summary of the collective memorable accomplishments in the past 27 years. They have awarded over $175,000 worth of scholarships to high school students in Sutter and Yuba Counties. They have adopted and donated food baskets to more than 500 families every holiday season. Partnered with the U.S. Department of Forestry to launch Proyecto Navidad, in which Hispanic Latino children are introduced to the importance of reforestation and land preservation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mark Boomgarden, Vice Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and on behalf of our entire city council, do hereby complain, proclaim, wow, this is my first time. I almost got through that. I do hereby proclaim proudly the month of September 15th through October 15th, 2020, to be National Hispanic Heritage Month. And I'm assuming I'll probably be giving this to Vera. I'm getting my steps. On behalf of the city and Yuba City City Council, our proclamation, and if you'd like to say a few things for...
I would just like to thank this... I would just like to thank this wonderful community that has supported us throughout the years. We appreciate this proclamation on behalf of the Hispanic community of Yuba, Sutter, and Colusa Counties. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. There you go. Please welcome Harcuran Kaur, the Yuba City Community Organizer for the Jakara Movement. And we are here to recognize Jaswant Singh Kalra Day, which was September 6th, 2020. Jaswant Singh Kalra was a strong advocate for the democratic and human rights of all people, and Jaswant was a highly respected leader within the Sikh community and beyond. Jaswant documented human rights abuse and fought for the dignity of all that had their humanity trampled by the Indian government. The Yuba City, the city of Yuba City is proud of its Sikh community and is home to broad service organizations such as the Gurudwara Sahib Yuba City, Sri Guru Nanak Sikh Temple, Punjabi American Heritage Society, and the Jakara Movement that are committed to social justice for all. September 6th is recognized by Sikhs and human rights supporters across the world as the date of the kidnapping and murder of Jaswant Singh Kalra in 1995. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mark Boomgarden, Vice Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and on behalf of our entire city council, do hereby proclaim September 6th as Jaswant Singh Kalra Day.
Thank you, everyone. Really appreciate the Vice Mayor and the council members for this appreciation for Jaswant Singh Kalra. Excuse me, I do get nervous talking in front of large crowds, but bear with me. Jaswant Singh Kalra was, as you know, the Vice Mayor has mentioned, a true human rights activist. He gave a voice to those who weren't able to give themselves a voice, and was in turn, had the same fate as a lot of the folks that he was trying to help. He was uncovering the disappearances of young Punjabi youth in Punjab, India, which is our homeland. And he demanded, there were, there were young, young folks and young moms who were asking him, you know, are our sons even alive? Where are they? What is going on? Why are hundreds of thousands of our young men just disappearing with no answers from the government, the Indian government? And so he went in demanding those answers. And when the government was not able to give an answer, give excuses of where they may have gone, in reality, these hundreds of thousands of men were killed. And so they, all they wanted, all the mothers wanted, the families wanted, were just some sort of answer as to whether or not their sons were even alive. Simple as that, but, you know. So what he did was he went to some crematoriums, tried to document the bodies, and tried to get some answers for those families. In the end, you know, he was also disappeared by the Indian government, and so he essentially gave his life for the work that he was doing. And he's a true, true hero. One of his quotes was, you know, "We are here to challenge the darkness. We are here to not let it surround us and suffocate us. We are here to be a light for those who do not have their own voice to be heard. We are here for those folks. We will fight against injustice. We will fight against inequities." And so this is why Jaswant Singh Kalra is such a loved and inspiring human rights activist for so many folks across the nation, across the world. This is his contribution, and we hope that we can make him proud with what we have to offer in, within our lifetimes to be that light and to challenge the darkness. So thank you again. We really appreciate that.
Thank you for your story. All right. We will move to item number three on our agenda, COVID-19. Discussion and action on measures to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19, the coronavirus pandemic. Diana Langley, our interim city manager, will be presenting.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Just a really quick presentation tonight to provide an update. So again, a couple weeks ago, they released, the state released a new blueprint for a safer economy, in which they identified four risk levels for counties. Currently, and this is as of today, Sutter County is still in the widespread, but you can see that our numbers in terms of the metrics are decreasing compared to where we were two weeks ago. Here's the dashboard from the Sutter County coronavirus website. And so you can see that our new cases per 100,000 population is 10.7, and then the positive test rate is 7%. And what's important about this is that elementary school waivers, districts can submit elementary school waivers to Dr. Lou once you get below the 14 cases per 100,000. So we've, we've reached that. I know Dr. Lou recently issued letters to the, the school districts related to getting those waivers together. And then, just a reminder to progress to the next tier, counties must have been in the current tier for a minimum of three weeks and meet both criteria for the next tier for the two prior consecutive weeks. So we're, we're still quite a ways away from the next tier, but it is, the numbers are declining. And so with that, are there any questions related to the COVID update?
Through the mayor, I just want to say, Diana, that it's great news to hear that the schools are going to be able to apply for the waiver, at least for, what is it, K through six, I believe, right?
Either K through six or K through five, but I think it's K through six, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think that's, from what I understand, they're already in the process of putting those together to get that waiver going.
Yeah.
So that's good news. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Heidi Newsleisner. I'm one of the co-founders of Freedom Angels Foundation. We're an organization that works across the nation, but specifically, we as a founders all are here in California. I drove here from the Bay Area specifically today in support of Benjamin Garcia and what he has accomplished here for Yuba City already taking a stand. I'm really proud. I've gone all across the state, and I've been in many different town council meetings. I'm very proud of the people who have come in here today to be present. I appreciate that. It seems here that human rights are being honored in the sense of if somebody chooses to wear a mask, that's their prerogative. If somebody chooses not to, that's also their prerogative. So I'm really grateful and I'm thankful to see many of you unmasked here on the council as well. What needs to be brought to light is with the CDPH. Newsom is, he's acting as a tyrant. As you guys well know, he's going to be appearing in court here on August 21st. I'm very grateful for the leadership of your Assembly Member Gallagher. His metrics, he's always going to toggle back and forth. It's, he changes the goalposts. And so you, as the city council, have authority. He said from day one, localism is deterministic. So here in Yuba City, you know that you do not have the death numbers, that this was led to believe. Yes, the virus is real. I'm not saying that there's not a real virus, but we do not have a pandemic, and numbers have proven this. We're six months into this now. Instead, we've seen businesses being destroyed. They're not coming back. Children not having access to be in loving, caring environments with role models that they need to be with at this time. Marriage is imploding, suicide going up. You guys know all the statistics about what's going on. This is on you guys, and you do have the authority to step up and say, "We're done. We're done with this pandemic. We are ending our emergency orders. We do not have to take our direction from an appointed official." Dr. Lou is appointed. She is not elected. Also, she was strategically put into her position in January. Guys, the city of Atwater, they declared themselves a sanctuary city. You absolutely can do the same thing. If you would like to be put in touch with the council and the mayor of Atwater, I would happy to be, put you in touch with that, as well as with Placer County, your neighboring county. They just ended it. They had the boldness to do it. Five to zero, they voted, saying, "We are ending the emergency orders." That was unanimous. You guys can do it too today, and that is what I'm urging you to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Heidi. Next, we have Benjamin, please.
Good evening. How much time do I have? I've prepared, I mean, if I could get through the whole thing, I'd appreciate it. It's, maybe I timed myself. It was like, I think, a little over, maybe almost five minutes. Three minutes? Okay, well, I'll get where I can get. I guess I'll just cut to the, to the meat of it. Give me one second, please. Initially, I will say that the concern for safety caused a lot of people to respond, respond quickly and altruistically to the shutdowns. We were told that we needed to do our part to keep strain off the hospitals because they were going to be overrun with COVID-sick patients. This turned out to be false, so much so that the ship's mercy and comfort were not even utilized to the 10% capacity, and hospitals began laying people off because there were no patients. Instead, Governor Newsom knowingly and willingly put COVID-sick patients in nursing homes with the most vulnerable. In terms of how much we know about the virus today compared to how much we knew when we first shut down, we know, we know a lot more. For instance, we know that the chances of dying from COVID in Sutter County, if you get it, are very slim. As of September 13th, 2020, which was just a few days ago, there have been 2,621 cases of COVID. But what we failed to mention is how many people have died, and that's what Gavin Newsom fails to mention, is the death rate. Of those, only 17 people have died. That means if you get COVID in Sutter County, you have a 9.9935% chance of surviving. Everything's going to be okay, right? The problem that we face today is not COVID itself, but it's the lie that COVID is so deadly that we have to sacrifice our freedoms, our lives, and our businesses. The problem is a lack of courage and leadership. The problem is, we were told, under the guise of safety, that we need to commit economic and social suicide, but there's one problem with your safety concerns. They lack common sense. Period. You must admit, COVID is no threat. There's no pandemic that's widespread and sweeping the streets of our cities, leaving dead bodies lying on the sidewalks. If I, if the numbers I took directly off Sutter County's website aren't enough proof that we're not in a pandemic, look no further than agenda number nine from the last city council titled Shopping Cart Ordinance. If we were in a pandemic, would we be talking about the shopping carts that are flooding our streets? No, we would be talking about the dead bodies. I would appreciate if I could read the rest, but if not, I understand. So we're not in a deadly pandemic. We're in a shopping cart pandemic. John Locke, his Treaties Concerning the True and Original Extent of an End of Civil Government, which is credited by many of our founders to have the greatest influence when drafting our Declaration of Independence, in his Treaties Regarding, in Regarding the State of War, he writes, "It being reasonable and just, I should have the right to destroy that which threatens me with destruction. For by the fundamental law of nature, man being preserved, the safety of the innocents is to be preserved. And one may destroy a man who makes war upon him or has discovered enmity to his being, for the same reason that he may kill a wolf or a lion, because they are not under the ties of common law and reason. Have no other rule but that of force and violence, and so may be treated as the beast of prey, those dangerous, noxious creatures that will sure to destroy, are sure to destroy him whenever he falls into their power." Gavin Newsom is that wolf. Yuba City is in a state of war, and he will stop at nothing until the people of California have lost everything. His blueprint for reopening may be under the guise of safety, but it's not reasonable. I'm one sentence away. And therefore, it must be ignored. Open our city. Let the people know that we will support their actions to conduct business the way they see fit. Have courage, stand up, and earn your reelection. Thank you.
Thank you, Benjamin. And Larry, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and City Council, for allowing us to speak this evening. I gave everybody a copy, you guys, in case you wanted to follow along. But my point tonight is that you have each taken the oath of office, and you solemnly swear to defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And I might bring your attention to Article Four, Section Four, in the little pamphlet I gave you. That guarantees every state in the Union a republican form of government, and that's not a democracy. A democracy is lawlessness and mobbed rule. What we're guaranteed is a representative form of government where we vote on you, and you represent us. And so far, it's been working here, but we'll see. The next one I would like you to look at and really consider in light of what's going on is Article Six, the second paragraph. And that basically, in a nutshell, states that the U.S. Constitution is the supreme law of the land, not Governor Newsom's mandate, not Kung Fu Lou's mandate and enforcement. It's the Constitution that is the ultimate law of the land. And if you look at Amendment One to the Constitution, it gives us five freedoms. And this mandate has taken almost all of them away from us. The first one, as everybody knows, is the freedom of religion. Right off the bat, we were prevented from going to church. We were prevented from praying out loud. We were prevented from singing gospel songs. And now, I guess you can, as long as you're six feet away, they can have one-fourth of their membership. If you have 100, then they can have 25 people come in and worship. If I'm number 26, they can kick me out. And you guys are enforcing that. And the second one is your freedom of speech, which I thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. But whether you listen to us is something else. And you are our elected officials, and you did take that oath of office. The third one is the freedom of press, which, I don't know about that. I wouldn't even want to comment on that. And then the next one is really serious, because you've restricted our assemblage here tonight because of the COVID scare. You had so many seats, probably five for the public. And then, if you want, you can go sit somewhere else in the, in the Sutter Room. And then the last one is our petition to, our right to petition the government for redress of our grievances. And these are some serious grievances that we've got. When this thing ever ends, there's going to be some heavy-duty lawsuits, because this Constitution is being violated every day, and almost all five of those freedoms in the First Amendment. I implore you to not support... I implore you to not support the governor's Marxist mandate on our restrictive, our freedoms. Thank you.
Any comments from the public on Item Three?
None received.
Okay. Anybody else? Sure. Yes, sir.
Hi, and thank you very much. I'm a veteran. I served this country with all. I took the oath that you people took. That oath has never went away from me, and it upsets me so much in my heart to see people in our government that have taken that oath, and they have no idea what it is. My question is, why, when you take an oath, do you not stand up for that oath and give the people that elected these people to represent us, give us an opportunity to live our lives if we see fit, not as they see fit? If they follow our Constitution to the letter, which it should be, we will be the free nation that we are. Otherwise, we're going to lose it all. And I implore you people, please, it is up to you to straighten this out. It's up to you to take care of all of this that is happening. You don't have to listen to the tyrant people. You need to listen to the people that are being punished for no reason. And they need you to help us become the country and the nation that we live under God, not someone else, not a tyrannical person. And I implore you, please, help us. The people need your help, and we need it now more than ever in our lifetime. And it's up to you to represent us, as you took an oath to do. And thank you once again.
Sir, could I just have you state your name?
My name is Terry Thompson.
Thank you, Terry.
You're very welcome.
Anybody else? If you could just state your name at the beginning, please.
Hello again. My name is Harkiran Gore. And I know that I am the unpopular opinion in this room. However, from what I believe, of course, I definitely understand. I think you mentioned about, you know, mental health issues being a huge problem, and there is obvious loss in business, and that's just unimaginable for those people going through this. And I want to be a school psychologist someday, so I understand that kids being home is not the ideal.
Sorry about that. Hold on for just a second so we can get them muted in the other room. Brad, if you can hear us, you guys are not muted. Sorry about that. Okay. Please resume.
Okay. Thank you. As I was saying, I want to be a school psychologist someday, so I understand that it is really difficult for kids to be home, depending on their, you know, situation at home. You don't know what it's like. It's sometimes their school is their escape. But I think I also feel, coming from a family who has many healthcare workers within, you know, and I'm sure others do as well, but from our family, you know, I have a sister-in-law who's working in those ER rooms, who is seeing what is happening every day, especially in the beginning of the pandemic. It was very rough. It is still rough. It is really hard. And I know Yuba City may not have as many cases or as many deaths, but those still matter. And from that, that is the perspective that I am coming from, and I understand that I am the unpopular opinion in this room. That is just truly how I feel. I truly believe that, you know, all these precautions are necessary and that we should be doing as much as we can to help each other and to help this public health crisis. And, you know, there are others, you know, who also feel the same way as I do, maybe not in this room. But I just wanted to share just because I understand everyone has a right to their opinion, and I, you know, that is the nation we live in. I just wanted to provide mine. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Harkiran. Okay. Anybody?
What do I do? Just talk? Okay, my name is Johnny Velazquez. I just saw an example of what we don't need in government and what we are seeing daily. Two things. One, just right now, politician, blame it on somebody else. You, at the beginning, there's, the lady, you make things way more difficult. And I'm talking about all people at levels in government. Instead of just handing it to her, reaching across and handing it to her, which everybody was telling you, you brought it around, made it difficult, came around, boom. As citizens, I just say, hey, do the common sense. Stop with the illegal orders, unconstitutional. We know that is. We got your backing. You're closer to us than the governor is. But he's illegal, unconstitutional. If a person can write a law without having to go through Senate Bill or the House Assembly, how can it be a law? That's, that's a dictator right there, you know? And why are you following a dictator's suggestions, mandates, whatever you want to put in front of it? So, are you in on it? Or will you be for, like what my brother said, to uphold that Constitution and the, the law of the land, supreme law of the land, I believe is they said? And that's all I had to say. I just, that's what I, I saw. But I got to go. I got a meeting.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilman Shaw, I think you had a comment.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. Just want to say a few things. Sir, thank you. I'm a veteran as well. I've taken the oath now about three times for various duties and offices I have held. And you guys, everything you guys have said, every person, including you, ma'am, is correct tonight because we're not a democracy. We are a republic. I've gone through the courses. I knew exactly where you guys were going. The first right or the First Amendment there was the freedom of religion. And if you guys, you guys already know this. The Ninth Circuit Court's already turned that over. I will tell you now, I've been in church just about this whole time, and I know many of the houses of worship have been. I will, I want to bring you some point of a couple of clarifications, okay? Number one, you talk about the, the order. It's a county order. This council has controlled what we can control. We don't control that order. We can't do what Placer County did because it's a county order. It's not ours, okay? So, with that, we have done everything we can. I don't, Vice Mayor, I don't think we've issued a single citation to any business or forced anyone to close down. We've left it to the business owners because if you feel comfortable, that's your right to go make business and do what you need to do and go to worship. If you feel you need to protect your family, that's your right as well. And so, you know, with that, we hear all of you. And I know that several of you come before the council now, not only this group but others, as if we don't hear you and we're doing something that, you know, we're forcing things. We're not. We're working within a system that we have to work with. And I call government a system because that's what it is. I'm not a politician. I'm a businessman. This is a system. We need each other. We have been supporting Assemblymember Gallagher in the background. I've signed on to letters. I think many of us on this council has been in concert step with him. He hears us. He takes that fight. We support him. We do everything we can here during this. When businesses were forced to close down, I can tell you that a majority of this council was at those businesses, listening to them, figuring out everything we could do to give and empower those businesses every opportunity they can. You mentioned the bowling alley last time. We don't have the authority to shut down a bowling alley. It's the owner of the bowling alley. If he wants, there's things we control and things we don't control. One of the biggest keys to this whole thing is, the governor has used ABC. And he goes into those businesses and threatens to pull their, their liquor license and basically ruin their lives forever because he controls that. We don't. We're not there pulling a liquor license. We've let it be their decision. So, if the owner chooses, and we've, I know the Vice Mayor and myself have looked at the face and been there after ABC has left, and these people are faced with huge obstacles, but that's a decision they have to make. We've done everything we can to empower them and do everything we can to support them. We're doing everything we can for this community. There is no perfect. There is no perfect. We are a republic. We have all those rights. I stand firmly behind those, you know? I was in Desert Storm, okay? It irritates me some of the things I, I see in this country going on, but at the same time, I realize that I serve to protect those freedoms, and it's everyone's right, whether I agree with them or not, to do some of the things they do. That's a different discussion. But if you really want to look at what Placer County did, I encourage you to go talk to the Sutter County Board of Supervisors because they ultimately have that. We can't repeal an order that we never issued, an emergency health order. And, but we do hear you. It doesn't fall on deaf ears, but we've been supportive of long this whole way because everyone has a right. If you feel like you need to take additional steps, which I just had to, I just got back from traveling cross-country, visited my father, who has been battling cancer, going through chemo. He has no immune system. Couple of weeks before, I went back. I had to be on a flight. I mean, I just basically closed in. I didn't want to come in contact with anyone that might have it because it is real, and to someone that has no immune system, I guarantee it's deadly. So, I had to do what I had to do. I flew five hours cross-country with an N95 mask on because I don't know who I'm on the plane with because I can't carry that to my father. That's my right. That's my choice, okay? And I respect that. I respect others like you guys tonight. I don't, I didn't ask you if you were sick or not sick. It's your, you do what you need to do, okay? Everyone has their rights. But at the same time, I will wear this occasionally when I feel like I need to out of respect for others. So, I just want you guys to know, we hear you. You're in here thinking, we don't know that this is a republic, a constitutional republic. We know that, okay? We firmly believe in this country. We firmly believe in individual rights and know that we are doing everything we can collectively to support the right mechanisms. And the fight that you guys are really seeking isn't so much here, but it's exactly where you talked about, it's with Sacramento. And we need each other because if we want to see those freedoms and those rights go on, we need you supporting and fighting it at Sacramento, knowing that we're doing everything we can here to support you as well. We're on the same team. We're not against each other. And I hope that you guys hear that and realize that because I've heard a lot of nuances that we're doing something wrong. We're doing everything we possibly can. There's just a lot of things we don't control. Where I just came back from, the kids are in school. Football's going on Tuesday night, Friday night, Saturday. I have no say over the school system. No one on this council does. So, we need to make sure that things we ask are asking the right governing body. And I tell you, from this council, we're clearing the road in every facet that we can because what happened to our businesses is an atrocity. It is an absolute atrocity. What happened to our freedom to religion is an atrocity. But I've been in contact with most of the pastors in this city, and most of the churches have been meeting in some shape, form, or fashion. So, with that, just know that it's not falling on deaf ears. We all have got a part to play in this. We're all trying to get to the right ends, and I just want you to know that we hear you and we're on the same team. So, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. If you, if you could kindly go to the podium, sir?
I want to make it very plain that this is not a personal thing with you people, that it has nothing to do with our personality. It's just our country is being damaged, and we just need your help, because we're asking for your help. But as far as being mad at you or directing things to you, no. We're simply here asking for you to tell us just what you've said. Where do we go? What do we do? How do we fix it? That's what you're here for, and that's what you're doing, and I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you. No, that's okay. Please, yeah, I mean, to be honest, it's good to have the public in the, in the room here. So, if you come in, we owe it to listen to you.
I appreciate the support we're getting from you. And I, I think my biggest concern with you people that we've elected here tonight is that you have the authority to open every one of these seats to the public. These are yours. This is our house. We, we paid the taxes to build this building and, and put you in here. But we come in and there's five or six seats. That's about it. And then you got to go, you know, there, you might as well stay home if you're going to go to the Sutter Room. But that kind of thing, our right to assemble is being infringed on. And you, you guys have the right to say, okay, we'll just let, let it happen. I don't know what's going to happen, you know, that, that somebody comes slap your hand or, or whatever, but little things like that. And our, our guy here, Ben, two, three, four weeks ago, came in and sat down, and he wanted to hear the, the city council meeting, and he, he was refused. He was taken and arrested. We're going to go to court the 28th and support him. And it wasn't because of COVID, and it wasn't because of the mandate from the governor because those aren't law. They aren't anything. So, they get him with trespassing, and, which has nothing to do with COVID. And then they get him with resisting arrest because he refused to leave. Those things you do have control over. And, and our Sheriff Landon, who we really adore, has control over those things.
Thank you for...
Thank you, Larry. Sure, you drove all the way up here.
Again, my name's Heidi Miosklesner with the Freedom Angels Foundation. I do appreciate, I, I can feel that people are enjoying having community right now, so thank you. I want you to know, I'm very appreciative of that. When the comment is made about go to the right governing body, I take issue with that. I work federal, state, county, and local. We all work together. We all are on the same team together. That is true. We do push back together. Atwater is a city council who stood, and I think you might be aware of it, but if you're not, like I said, I'm happy to put you in contact with Paul Crichton, the mayor of Atwater, as well as the whole city council. They had the courage to stand together. Merced County Board of Supervisors has not said that the emergency is over, but the city of Atwater stood together. So, while I do appreciate, it is true, you guys have not shut down churches because I actually drive up here to attend church because there aren't options in the Bay Area right now. So, it is true. You are doing that correctly in the sense of you, I'm not aware of anybody doing any citations. So, I do appreciate that. But you need to empower your businesses, your citizens, to all work together, to then go to the county too, to put the pressure on with the county. But as a city, you guys can take a stand just to say, we're a sanctuary city. You can do it. So, I just want to encourage you with that.
I just, you know, I just want to kind of reiterate what Heidi said and what Larry said because when I came in here that day, I came, I drove all the way from Sacramento. I do heating and air conditioning. I'm sick of watching our city fall apart, and I wanted to be part of the solution because I could sit home and I can complain, or I can come be a part of the solution, come and address you, who are the heads of our city. And I decided to defy what I believe are unlawful orders, their pretend laws because they did not go through legislation. And you do have... They're pretend laws because they did not go through legislation, and you do have the power to control what goes on in this room. And when I have people addressing me saying that I have to be living in the same house in order to sit with somebody, that's none of your business, in my opinion. And that's what I think is lacking here, is courage, is to say, look, we get what they're saying we have to do, but we don't have to go along with it. As long as people go along with things that are mandated, that are not lawful, they'll continue to put those pretend laws on us as long as people go along with it. It's only once people start pushing back a little bit, and I understand, I get, you know, I do get it, you know? It's a real disease, and I, as a heating and air conditioning service technician, every time I enter a home, I offer to wear a mask because I respect other people's decision, you know? But let me make my own. Let me attend this meeting. If I'm afraid to come to a city council meeting and I want to wear a mask or I'm afraid, then by all means, stay home. Make the individuals responsible for their decisions. You're not responsible for what people do, and I don't know if it's a fear of being sued or what. I don't know, but I feel like you guys have no right to tell us we can't sit together. We can only have five people in a meeting, and this and that, that is in your jurisdiction. So knock that off. Take the tapes off the seats. Let's start there, and then we can figure out what's the next small step that we can take to gain back a little bit of ground because that's how we lost our freedoms, with small compromises at a time. So I appreciate you, you know, thank you for letting me speak and thank you for letting me be here and not arresting me.
Thank you, Benjamin. Okay. Okay. Thank you all for participating in the meeting. We are sincere when we say that we value the public being a participant in our meetings and clearly trying to get this council chambers open like it has been in the past, and our community back to how it has been in the past is certainly a top priority for us. And it's not without its perils, as Councilman Shaw said. I think some of you may recall, this city and this county were some of the first to defy the governor and also the first to suffer the wrath of that. And so I think while I appreciate hearing all the comments and concerns and suggestions, please know that we do take those to heart and we're doing what we can as a city council in the city of Yuba City. May not always meet your expectations, but please know that we're trying, okay? Moving to item number four, public communication.
Vice Mayor, as you say that, I want to also add to what you just mentioned, sir, to say that even though you stood up in the unpopular discussion, that took a lot of courage for you to do that as well. So I just want to recognize that you were also listened in the entire group. We do a lot of listening here, and I think that's probably one of the things that most of us could really benefit from doing more of that. Thank you.
And let me follow up on that too, and thank you to those who have the opposing opinion for listening respectfully. Sometimes we see a lot of discord in the United States of America now when people have different opinions, and it was good to see that folks could speak their piece freely without any hostility. So thank you for that. Thank you, Councilwoman. Okay, appearance of interested citizens. This is a time and place for folks to get in front of us. I'm going to read this statement, and I know it's not going to make me feel real popular right now, but I'm going to read it nonetheless because they say I have to. Due to COVID-19, residents are encouraged to attend the city council meeting via web conference or submit comments by email. Consistent with the public health guidelines for social distancing, limited seating is available in the council chambers and in our Sutter Room. If an attendee does not have a facial covering, one will be provided. Comments may be made either at the council chamber podium or from the Sutter Room. Please participate via web conference or email if you are ill or have been exposed to COVID-19. Do we have any comments from the public?
None have been received yet.
I'm sorry? Oh, that was Trish.
Yeah.
None?
Just you mean, no?
Okay. None. All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed, removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Would anyone from the public like to speak on these items? If so, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. Do we have any comments from the public on the consent calendar? Okay, we will be removing, as I mentioned earlier, item six, which is selective traffic enforcement program grant to include DUI enforcement and education efforts. City Clerk, do we have any email comments?
None received so far.
Thank you. Entertain a motion on the...
To the Vice Mayor. Move to approve the consent calendar, items five, seven, eight, nine, and 10.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the consent calendar with the exception of item six. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, the motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item six is approved. And now we will take up item six, the selective traffic enforcement program grant to include the DUI enforcement and education efforts. This will be presented by Traffic Sergeant Kim Slade.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Councilmembers. Tonight, I'm going to give you the staff report for this year's STEP grant. This year, the STEP grant includes $92,500 that we were awarded just recently because of COVID restrictions. It took a little bit longer than it normally does. So the grant entails from October 1 of this year, 2020, till September 30 of 2021. So what I'm looking for is to adopt a resolution for the chief of police to accept the grant in the sum of $92,500 from the Office of Traffic Safety. Also looking for the city council to authorize supplemental appropriations in the given amounts to the appropriate account numbers. The fiscal impact to the city is that there's no matching fund required on this grant. So the $92,500 is just given to us from the federal government. This year, the grant includes three dash-mounted radars for equipment purposes and also six new preliminary alcohol screening devices. So that's what we will be acquiring after the 1st of October. So that's the equipment for this year. The rest of the monies, to include about $69,000, are to be included in overtime operational things such as DUI checkpoints, DUI saturations. We have general traffic enforcement, which then helps us deter some of recently, like some of our racing vehicles, things like that. So we do a lot of that. And then it does include, which we didn't have a lot this year because of COVID, it does include the bicycle and pedestrian programs, bicycle rodeos at the schools, with school being shut down, a lot of that stuff we didn't get to do this year because of COVID. So other than that, if anybody does have any questions, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Sergeant Slade. Before we open up the public hearing, any questions from the council? Okay. All right. No questions from the council at this time. Public hearing on selective traffic enforcement program grant is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public? City Clerk, anything?
None received online.
Okay. Let me know if we do get anything. Hearing, no further comment on this issue. I'm closing the public hearing, bringing the matter back to the council. Councilwoman Espendola.
Thank you for doing the work that you're doing. So you pirked my interest in when you said these racing cars. What's going on there? I hear a lot of engine power out there on the streets sometimes.
Yes, I think a lot of it has to do with just the times that we're in. A lot of kids that should be in college, should be away, you know, for school and things like that. They're just here. I think what you also have is you have a lot of automobile dealerships giving pretty much cars away for almost nothing, just with all the incentives and everything. So it's kind of pushed that interest, we all know, I mean, if you look at any of the stuff, that's one of the leading things as far as sales goes, is the car dealerships. So I think that's what's pushing some of it is just, you know, we've had a couple of what they call sideshows, car shows, that have shown up in our area. You know, about a month ago, we had a group of about 1,000 or more show up at our local Yuba College, and it was just something that was posted on Instagram. So, you know, we've been trying to track some of that. A lot of that stuff that we found out is by invite only. So some of our personnel in the department have kids around that age that are interested in that stuff, and that's kind of how we found out about some of the newer things or the more current things that have been coming through.
How are the DUI stops that have been happening? How's that been going?
It's been going good. We've had our last checkpoint, which was two weeks ago. We had one DUI arrest out of that, three people that were given FSTs, and then we had a couple of other people just actually cited on just other misdemeanor warrants. So, and then regular saturation patrols, they're usually getting two or three a weekend.
Very good, very good. Well, thank you for your work, and I appreciate you keeping the streets safe when I'm crossing over, man. Sometimes I have to run a little faster, but thank you.
Councilwoman Cardozoany?
Yes, thank you.
I'm ready to go for a motion if you are Vice Mayor.
Sure. I'll entertain a motion on item six, please.
All right, through the Vice Mayor. I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the chief of police to accept $92,500 and grant funding from the 2020-2021 Traffic Enforcement Program and approve expenditure recommendations. Likewise, authorize a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $92,500 to account number 100-43409, 2167-61430, 2167-62801, and 2167-63801.
Second.
Fifth. Just kidding.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Shaw, and a second by this time I'm giving the award to Councilwoman Espendosa.
Bandoza?
I'm kidding. Espendola.
You just blended with the Cardozo, right? Like it.
I figured you'd get a kick out of that one. All those in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Item six passes. Thank you, Sergeant Slade, and thank you, the rest of the unit, for the good work they do.
Thank you.
Okay, business items. A nuisance ordinance update is going to be presented by our Development Services Director, Ben Moody.
All right, good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the city council. So the item before you is the second part, no, two-part process to update the city's nuisance ordinance. And so basically before you is we're looking at, the second part is adopting an ordinance, adding chapter eight to Title IV of the Yuba City Municipal Code pertaining to nuisances by title only and waiving the second reading. And so with this being the second time around, I'm going to go through it a little quicker, but please feel free to ask any questions during the presentation if we want to get into any specific details. And so the proposed ordinance was introduced on September 1 at the city council meeting with the background basically being the city council has a strong desire to promote livability, enhance community appearance, raise social and economic conditions for the community. And then with this complete replacement of the ordinance, this will match, it's a needed update that will match state laws, meet noticing requirements, and address problematic nuisance definitions. And so here's a snapshot from the 2019 service request through YC 311. We had approximately a little over 1,000 cases last year just through the YC 311 system with the majority of them being property code violations that ranged from garbage in the front yard to fence and various issues with the property. The proposed ordinance complies with current legal requirements, provides streamlined, clarified processes, provides for a wide range of enforcement mechanisms, and updates adds nuisance definitions. So the big highlights on the slide, I'll read through them real quickly. Clarified violations, the fees, noticing and appeal processes, reviewed and confirmed definitions to clearly define nuisance types and that they meet current goals, added requirements for property owners to trim trees, shrubs around streetlights, signs, and streetlights, clarify conflicts with public property. We added tractor-trailer parking and clearly defined the definition, and then we added vacant property definitions and requirements for vacant property plans. So the goal with this and with the city is always the voluntary compliance. So our efforts are absolutely working with the property owners and working through the goal of voluntary compliance, but this new ordinance also provides those tools to encourage compliance when it's not meeting a timeline that's needed, which is administrative citations, special assessments, property liens, public notices on deeds, authority to clean, even up to criminal prosecution depending on the severity. With that, the fiscal impact associated with this is just the staff time to administer and enforce the ordinance with current budgeted resources. So there's no added fiscal impact with adoption of this ordinance. And then with priorities, they will remain the same, that it's health and safety. We're in no specific order here, but with homelessness and camping ordinances, dealing with COVID-19 responses related to YC 311, and any proactive issues that the city needs to deal with that may arise. And so with that, I'm asking for the recommendation to adopt an ordinance of the city council, the city of Yuba City, adding chapter eight to Title IV of the Yuba City Municipal Code pertaining to nuisances by title only and waive the second reading, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Okay. Do we have any comments from the public on this item, please, in the chambers? Okay.
There is one comment that came through via email.
Will you be reading that or...
We'll be reading that.
Okay.
So this came through from Ms. Karen Hess today. So honorable council members, I'd like the rewrite of the nuisance ordinance. I'm hoping that you will aggressively use the new ordinance to shut down and penalize violators of emergency orders using section 4-8.411. But I hope, but I have no hope that you will. The city has already failed to use any of its existing regulatory enforcement powers to close down the indoor sports venue at 851 Gray Avenue, which continues to operate in defiance of state and local public health orders and local zoning. If the city indeed intends to abate nuisances, please schedule a motion for your next council meeting to declare home court NorCal Supreme Sports a nuisance. I've already provided code enforcement with all the data they need. It's been there three years since you let the business run amok. It's time to resolve it. Sincerely, Karen Hess, Yuba City.
Other public comment?
None online.
Okay. Questions from the council? Hearing none?
Vice Mayor, can I ask you about the chickens? Is that okay to ask about those chickens?
Absolutely.
Where's Brad at? I know he's somewhere in the other, there he is. Hi, Brad. I know the chickens belong to no one, but I'm just, or at least, am I saying that correctly? But some parts of our neighborhoods where these chickens roam wild in a way, then they're really destroying a lot of these nuisance law orders that we're putting in place. And, you know, like I've seen personal property, offensive orders, you know, laundry hanging, you know, all those things within the chickens. So what are we going to do about those chickens beyond WENCO that are in the residential community areas?
You know, this is going to be a trying question on the spot, but definitely, the owners within the city limits are only allowed so many chickens and no roosters. Property that is, chickens that are within the Caltrans rideways, state rideaway, vacant property, I know that we could definitely work with the property owners, and I know the city has worked with the Walmart Shopping Center, the WENCO Shopping Center, the Rayleigh Shopping Center to see what they could do and the flexibility they have with SASSA and some of the options available to try to minimize those issues. If there's a specific spot, we definitely could reach out, but it seems to be reoccurring where we kind of, they kind of get knocked down, some of the owners take care of some of the issues, and then they arise back. And so if there's a certain area, we could definitely work.
I would love to take some of the, you know, some of the... I would, I would love to, um, take some of the, you know, some of the, um, folks that traffic, whoever, you know, do this, I would love to go and walk the neighborhood so we can see firsthand some of these concerns and some of it is, you know, the landscaping, but it's also hazardous in a way because these, they're, you know, chickens do what they do and there's roosters there too and there's dogs and cats and they don't, I've asked people who do they belong to and they say they don't belong to anybody.
That is correct. That is correct. You can go to SASSA Councilwoman, Councilwoman and they'll give you a, like a cat cage, chicken cage, you can catch them and then you can bring them to the SASSA.
I, I.
In your neighborhood.
They're not in my neighborhood. They're in, um, constituents' neighborhoods, belong to all of us, so they're, they're definitely roaming beyond the Winco area where, where we're normally seeing them in that area. So Brad, any comments or thoughts behind that? Anybody like to take a little walk with me so I can show you?
We all know. They're from Bog Road to Peas Road, the chickens.
This is a, they're like double duplexing it and with other community members.
Councilwoman, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Brad McIntyre. Um, so a couple things. Uh, one, we, uh, have tried to work with specific, uh, vendors, restaurants, Winco specifically in that area. Um, and we could certainly help, those chickens, uh, roosters don't belong to anyone solely. Uh, they are just roaming and we are at Center Animal Services 30 and certainly help mitigate that if it is on private property, if the private property owner is willing to work with us. We just can't go into a private property and take the chickens. Um, so that's one issue. Second issue is that we have a lot of people in our community that like chickens, feel strongly just, uh, that they shouldn't roam. So that certainly be a discussion, uh, through our Center Animal Services Board. Uh, the third thing is that we limited a ordinance as far as free feeding coordinates, which is, um, if we find somebody that is prefeeding animals for more than 14 days, then they have ownership of those animals. And then we can hold them accountable for those animals. Now we use that for dogs, cats, stray cats, uh, and of course chickens as well. We, I think some people think the city, quote unquote, the city, own the chickens, uh, and we do not. And they certainly are a nuisance, uh, for some individuals in our community. I think some people are afraid to call Animal Services because they think that we will euthanize them. Um, if they are aggressive, uh, we will, uh, to be quite honest. But if they're not, we have quite a few farmers, uh, that are interested in, um, keeping them out in the farm. So we have partnerships with farmers that are interested as well. So it's only a, on a case by case, uh, situation and I always encourage people to contact me specifically if they want help to mitigate it, uh, but they also have to hand me our distribution.
Right. Um, I would, I would love to, um, take you for, um, for both of us can go for a little walk, Brad, and so we can take a look at the, and how we can help the area that I'm, I wanted to show you. Okay? And, and the reason I'm saying that is because a lot of the new items within this nuisance, I can visually just see them as I'm walking in the neighborhoods and the community that, that I'm referencing and I want to point it out because, you know, I want to be, um, to work with the community that, that lives there to try to make it look, you know, healthier and better for everyone.
Yeah, and we would, we would need help with that neighborhood to be quite honest. Um, we don't, we actually don't patrol officers that are not going to be chasing chickens to be quite honest. Um, and so we would set traps and those traps, we would need help when there's a chicken in those traps so that we could safely relocate it as well.
All right. Well, we'll be in touch with each other then. Thank you. Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
All right, through the mayor?
Please.
Now that this entire conversation has gone to the birds, I'll chime in. Um, well, the first thing is I will say that, uh, our chickens that we have that are free range, Mr. McIntyre, are great citizens because it's the only chickens I've ever seen actually use the crosswalk to get across Highway 99 at Carl's Jr. It was quite funny. Yeah, it was kind of funny. But anyway, um, uh, to, to go back to the, to get back on point, the, um, uh, SASSA does do a, a great job and I can speak firsthand. I didn't have a rooster. I was hearing it, didn't know where it came from, but they knocked on my door last year wanting to know if I had a rooster and I'm like, nope, but I can hear it. It's somewhere within about four houses. And they knocked on the right door and the rooster was gone. So it, I don't know if it ended up Original or Extra Crispy, but it was gone after that. Um, so, but back to the nuisance ordinance, uh, Mr. Moody, thank you for all the work you've done. Uh, we've needed this for quite some time. Uh, it will help us work on those trouble spots as I brought up last time, uh, with a lot of out of town property owners that are turning a blind eye to the things that I mentioned, the house out in, uh, the, uh, Royal Ranchero area that has been abandoned for it seems like dang near 10 years that had a tree laying on it last year in the, in the fall and, and it took that. This will help get those types of situations under control as well as, um, the nuisance that we had earlier this afternoon. Thank you and to our team at the city because someone had abandoned a shopping cart home that they had turned into a three-bedroom, two-bath on Live Oak Boulevard that, uh, we had to go out and retrieve. It had been there for quite some time. So, uh, just want to say thank you. I appreciate all the work. And, uh, with that, Mr. Vice Mayor, if you're ready, I'll make a motion.
Please.
I move that we adopt an ordinance of the City of Yuba City, uh, adding chapter eight to title four of this Yuba City Municipal Code pertaining to nuisances by title only and waive the second reading.
Second. I have a, uh, motion and a second on item 11. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye with chickens.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes, item number 11, nuisance ordinance update. Thank you, Mr. Moody. And we'll move on to item 12, Dispatch Recruiting Incentive Program, uh, presented by our Chief of Police, Rob Landon.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members. I would like to point out that, uh, I think about two weeks ago that the governor signed a, uh, AB 1945, which was passed in the legislation and the both houses basically, almost unanimously, if not unanimously. And what it did is it recognized public safety dispatchers as first responders. And why that's important to this is because dispatchers are finally being recognized for the importance that they truly have an add to this community and to the police department, the fire department and EMD specifically. They're the first ones that take calls. When somebody's calling an emergency, they're the first voice that people hear, whether it's somebody that needs immediate lifesaving intervention, they have been trained to do that, or whether it's the last call that somebody needs just to comfort them in a suicide or some type of incident like that. So they are being significantly, um, undervalued, not by this department, not by this city, but I think it's important right now as we go in front of you with this, uh, Dispatch Recruiting Incentive Program that we do point out just how important they are for everybody. So what I have before you tonight is Dispatch Recruiting Incentive Program. And it's basically to remain, or the purpose is to maintain the dispatch staffing level at the police department, a very competitive market by offering incentives to encourage highly qualified lateral dispatchers to apply within the Yuba City Police Department and also to retain the current ones that we have. Yuba City Police Department is staffed at 12 dispatchers. They answer all fire calls, they do all police calls, they do all dispatching of, uh, emergency medical type stuff and they also do public works on the weekends. They're severely overtaxed, we have two of them at a time. When you have 12, that's okay. We can, they can handle the load. They're handling over a thousand, a hundred thousand calls a year. But right now currently as we sit, we have eight dispatchers. Part of the problem is that we've lost three dispatchers recently to other agencies. And the reason we're losing them is because people can drive to Rockland, people can drive to Roseville and currently Yuba County and some other agencies are given some really good incentives to attract laterals. The benefit of a lateral dispatcher is the fact that they can be trained and put on the, on the, uh, not on the road, but on a dispatch console. Within a couple of months, they're ready to roll. They can, they can do all that. A brand new dispatcher that's never experienced this life before, it, it takes two months to go through a background and on top of that, it takes one year to go from training from start to finish. And that's if they, they're an unproven performer at that point in time. That's to say, if they made it all the way through there, that's 12 to 14 months. So during that time, they're not able to dispatch by themselves. So basically you're paying for a dispatcher to train them and them. And that's why the benefit of a lateral dispatch comes in hand. So what I'm presenting you tonight is a, uh, an opportunity for us to create a lateral incentive pay for laterals and then on top of that, the, the incentive for them to stay. Just for us some background right now, base pay to base pay, I wish I would have printed this out, but I'm not good at PowerPoints. In this current area, who we're competing against is Chico, Sutter County, Yuba County, Woodland, Lincoln, Roseville and Rockland. Now I know we can't compete, um, with them financially, one-on-one, that'd be impossible. But the reality is that somebody can live in Yuba City and drive to Rockland in 40 minutes. Somebody can drive to Sacramento in that same amount of time. So even though it's not the major factor, I think what we offer at Yuba City is the quality of life, the community, people are invested, they're already here, they want to keep their family here in this type of environment. But we do have to recognize also that Rockland, Roseville and those other agencies are paying almost $20,000 a year or more than our department. And we currently are the second lowest one next to of all cities, Chico, um, in this area that we're competing with. So what we're proposing right now, is the right page here, is first of all, what we've done with officers. And what we've done with officers in the past is to offer two types of incentives, a referral incentive to people to get that officer that is qualified to test at that department and to get hired at the department. So we're offering that for a lateral dispatcher and that's going to be a 25, what we're proposing is a $2,500 incentive. It's going to be pay in stages. So the city would compensate city employees who refer ultimately successful recruits for these positions with two payments. First pace, payment of 1,250 would be made upon the city's hiring the lateral dispatcher and that's contingent on their passing, the medical, the background, the psychological. And then 1,250 dollars would be made when the new employee, employee successfully completes probation, which is a year. And there's certain people that are not qualified and certain people that are, I'm not going to get into all that. As far as who can, who can, um, refer people, obviously I can't, city council can't, there's a lot of people that can't. Hiring incentive of $10,000, this is the most important for one to attract, um, dispatchers. So that would be paid also in three payments. The first payment of $2,500 would be made upon the successful hiring of the candidate. The second payment of $2,500 would be made upon successful completion of the training program. And the third and final payment of $5,000 would be made upon completion of the probationary period, probationary period, which is one year. So that's how we would try to attract lateral dispatchers. Currently we'd like to bring two of them over. That's our goal. And we think based on interest that we may have that opportunity should we present them with an incentive. The second one is a retention incentive pay. The City Police Officers Association and First Level Group have agreed to side letters regarding restitution or retention incentives for current dispatch staff in an effort to keep vacancies from occurring in the dispatch uni, dispatch unit. A retention incentive in the amount of $1,500 would be made to all dispatch personnel in a two-payment method. Again, the side letter has been signed and the first payment of $750 would be paid on the period including October 15th, 2020. And a second payment of $750 would be distributed on the pay period including December 15th, So basically the fiscal impact of that, I didn't address where we lost the three dispatchers too. We lost one to Roseville, Rockland and Yuba County Sheriff's Department. The fiscal impact based on this is, I, I don't think it's going to be a major impact because it's going to be recovered in salary savings. The proposed recruitment incentive will be funded from salary savings out of the police department budget from existing dispatcher vacancies. The maximum cost of the program is three, $38,500, which basically is two lateral dispatchers, two lateral dispatchers, referral and hiring incentives. That's $25,000. And then the retention incentive for nine employees in the dispatch unit currently, if they all stayed, one is currently in the hiring process with somebody else, would be $13,500 for a total of $38,500. And again, by getting a dispatcher in there that's a lateral, get them on the road in two months, vice 12 months, you have 10 months of savings right away for each one that we hire. And that 10 months of savings equates out to about, I think it was 60 something thousand dollars, just in the ballpark of 50 to 60,000 dollars per year, which should more than cover this already. So the alternative is do not, do not adopt the ordinance, provide staff with the direction to amend the recommendation. And the recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing a dispatcher recruiting and retention incentive program and approving corresponding side letters with the Police Officers Association and the First Level Manager Group, which are addressed because the, uh, Communication Supervisor is part of that group and not the POA. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions from the council.
Questions from the council? Okay. Just, uh, thank you chief for the presentation, uh, from one who, who spent, uh, 30 years on the other end of the radio from a dispatcher, uh, who many, many, many times, countless times, uh, assisted not only myself, but those that I work with and so serve the citizens. I think sometimes our dispatchers, uh, to your point, uh, are not viewed necessarily as emergency first responders and they very much are. And it's good to see that legislation pass and, and I think this particular, uh, item that you're bringing forward to us is vitally important to the safety of our citizens, which has constantly been one of the priorities of this council. Do we have any comments from the public on this item, please?
None on the line.
Okay. Any further questions?
Just a comment through the Vice Mayor. Uh, chief, uh, just want to say thank you for your leadership and recognizing what the men and women in blue in Yuba City need and how we need to take care of them because you know we have the utmost respect, uh, for all you who serve this city and, uh, glad to see that they have received the recognition of first responders. I know every time I've called over and, and been by there, they are professional. They, they have tenacity to work through anything and, uh, I can't say thank you enough. And I fully support this recommendation you're bringing forward because we, we do need to take care of our dispatch and our, our men and women in, in blue. So thank you.
Through the Vice Mayor. Please.
Uh, I also support this 100% also chief. And with that, I'd like to make a recommendation of adopting a resolution authorizing the dispatcher recruiting incentive program and approve corresponding side letters with the Police Officers Association and First Level Managers Group.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, um, by Councilman Cardozo and a second by Councilwoman Espendola. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion passes. Thank you, chief.
Great job, chief.
Please communicate to the dispatchers how much we do value their service.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 13, which is the annexation of property to Community Facilities District, CFD number 2017 dash one, to fund municipal services. The presentation is by our interim city manager, Diana Langley.
Good evening again. So in 2017, uh, City Council approved the formation of Community Facilities District 2017 dash one. At the time it was formed, there were, um, five specific development projects that were identified and those projects were Sutter Heritage, Walnut Park Estates, Faith Christian Residential Development Site, Yuba Crossings and Valencia Estates. And to date, only Valencia Estates has actually developed and annexed into the district. So on September 19th, 2017, council also adopted a resolution approving a tentative map for a project up on the north end of Stabler Lane, on the east side of Stabler Lane across from Regency Park. There's a condition of approval on the map that states that prior to recordation of the map, the development shall pay for operations and maintenance for police, fire, parks, drainage and ongoing street maintenance costs, the items that are covered by the CFD. And so the condition notes that this condition may be satisfied through participation in Melrose Community Facilities District by payment of cash or by another secure funding mechanism. And in this case, the developer has decided to move forward with, uh, joining the CFD 2017 dash one. So for reference purposes, the, uh, property again is located on the north side of Stabler Lane. So here's Stabler Lane, Peas Road is up here, here's Regency Park and here's the property. So the standard procedure for this is to approve a resolution of intent to annex, hold a public hearing within 30 to 60 days and finally hold an election within 90 to 80 day, 180 days. However, in this situation, we have a developer that has, is ready to record the final map and has, my understanding is a buyer. And so we have compressed the process significantly to where we are doing all of the actions tonight. And so fortunately, our city attorney assisted us with determining that process and, um, so we're going through this. And so we're going through this alternate streamlined process for annexing the property into the CFD. So one of the things that I want to note is that all property owners have submitted a petition to annex and waiver the deadlines, and copies can be provided if desired. There are other alternatives to this. Did I skip a slide? I'm going too far. So first, again, the developers, I skipped a slide, so now I've got to go back, so please excuse me for a moment.
This one's going to be cumbersome, so take your time.
I know. I'm a little bit flustered, because we're going to get into a series of things that we have to do with council, so I'm anticipating that. So the developer is agreeable to waiving the standard time periods, which is noted in the waiver. And they're requesting that the council approve a resolution of intent to annex, hold the public hearing, and conduct the election, all in the same meeting. And the developer owns all the properties to be annexed. So the current levy for the CFD is $467.10 per single-family residential unit. So alternatives, council could proceed with not authorizing annexation into the CFD and direct staff to come up with another means for the development to contribute to its fair share of services, or authorize the annexation but do not approve the request for waivers. We do not recommend either one of those alternatives and recommend the following. So this is where it starts to get into the process. So first, adopt a resolution stating intent to annex certain territory into CFD 2017-1, setting a time and date for the public hearing thereon, which will be tonight, and adopting a boundary map showing territory proposed to be annexed to CFD 2017-1. So prior to council adopting the resolution, the Vice Mayor needs to call for public comment.
Public comment or a public hearing?
Public comment.
Okay. Any comment from the public, please? Anything via email?
Nothing by email.
Okay, back to you.
On to the next step. Now, hold a public hearing for the annexation of tentative parcel map number 17-02 into CFD 2017-1.
This is right.
Yes.
Before we go to the next step, if we vote on reservation.
Yep. To the Vice Mayor.
Please.
I move to adopt a resolution stating intent to annex certain territory into CFD 2017-1, setting a time and date for a public hearing thereon, and adopting a boundary map showing territory proposed to be annexed to CFD 2017-1.
Second.
I'm assuming that you're setting the time and date as right now.
As in 30 seconds.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? Motion passes?
So next is the public hearing.
Public hearing on the annexation of tentative map parcel, excuse me, of tentative parcel map number 17-02 into CFD 2017-1 is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment, state your name and address for the record. Do we have anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this? Seeing none, and...
Nothing online.
Nothing online. Hearing no further comment on this issue, I'm closing the public hearing and bringing the matter back to the council.
And then next, please adopt a resolution authorizing annexation number one of territory to CFD 2017-1, authorizing the levy of a special tax, and submitting the levy of tax to the qualified electors.
To the Vice Mayor.
Go ahead.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on item C, adopting the resolution, not roll call. Can I signify by saying aye, please?
Aye.
All those opposed? None noted? Resolution passes?
All right, next, the city clerk will open the ballots and announce the results.
One ballot was received. Inside the envelope are two ballots, and they both mark yes and unanimous.
Thank you. Any comments from the public on this item? Seeing and hearing none? Anything?
All right.
Okay. Back to you, Diana.
Finally, please adopt a resolution making certain findings, declaring and certifying the results of an election, and adding property to CFD 2017-1. And this one, again, requires public comment.
Any comment from the public? Seeing and hearing none?
None received online.
Okay.
To the Vice Mayor.
Go ahead.
So moved. Adopt a resolution making certain findings, declaring and certifying the results of an election, and adding property to CFD 2017-1.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on item D. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None noted? Item D passes.
That's it, thank you.
And I want to thank Mayor Harris, because every time I stand in for him, it's something else.
Vice Mayor, you're doing exceptional work, okay? So you're doing great. You're doing great. He's watching the recording right now.
More likely. Okay, we're going to move to item 14, which is a gated community concept. Again, the presentation by Diana Langley, our interim city manager.
So in 2013, residents living on Hastings Way and Morrison Bend in Yuba City, which is located at the northeast corner of Railroad Avenue and Bog Road, approached staff about the concept of converting their subdivision to a gated neighborhood. So the item was brought before council in February 2013 for policy direction, and the council at that time said that, yes, they could proceed, provided that 100% of the property owners were in agreement, and that all property owners agreed to pay for the ongoing maintenance of the improvements internal to the neighborhood. And so what happened is that they went back to the neighbors, and they had, they couldn't get 100% approval for proceeding with abandoning the right-of-way and creating a gated subdivision. At the time, items that were considered were community acceptance of the exclusivity of gated neighborhoods in general. Currently, within Yuba City, there are three gated neighborhoods. They were submitted, when the applications were submitted for those subdivisions, they were submitted as private subdivisions, and so they were processed such. Those neighborhoods are Widridge Court off of Lincoln Road, Cobblestone Court off of Blevin Road, and then O'Callow off of Clark Road. The other thing is the uniqueness of the neighborhood request and/or the precedent set in supporting a gated community concept. So consideration should be given to points of access, other areas served by the streets, the ability to install gates and stack vehicles without impeding traffic on other streets, et cetera, the ability to provide access to emergency services, postal services, garbage collection, and other delivery drivers. And so the gates would need to be equipped with the necessary devices to allow emergency vehicles to access the subdivision, and then also codes would need to be given to postal employees, garbage employees, et cetera, to be able to get into the gates. And then another consideration is the willingness of residents to accept all costs of conversion, all added maintenance costs of private street conversion, organizational mechanism to ensure monetary obligations and necessary work are being carried out, and formation of a homeowner's association with 100% approval of the property owners. In regard to legal considerations, Streets and, the California Streets and Highways Code does not allow you to put a gate on a public street. So in order to be able to install gates, we would need to restrict, we would actually have to abandon the right-of-way so that they can restrict access. And so the property owners would have to preserve access rights through the dedication of cross-access easements, and then also provide easements for any public utilities within the subdivision so that the utility providers continue, can continue to maintain them. So fast forward to July of 2020, two representatives of that same neighborhood came forward and approached staff again about converting the neighborhood to a gated community, and their request is as follows: provide gated ingress/egress off of Bog Road and Railroad Avenue, and the city to continue to provide maintenance of all city-owned internal infrastructure via maintenance agreement at no additional cost to the property owners. So specific to this subdivision, again, you have Railroad Avenue, Bog Road, you have the main entry here at Hastings Way, and then you have another entrance here at Railroad Avenue. At the Bog Road entrance, you can see that you could install gates here and have stacking for vehicles. And on Railroad Avenue, if you installed the gates far enough back, you could allow for stacking of vehicles as they're waiting for the gates to open. So in terms of maintenance considerations, other gated communities within Yuba City pay for the maintenance of the internal infrastructure. So it's a, they're private streets, so they're responsible for the street maintenance, streetlights, storm drain, sewer. We maintain the water lines in those subdivisions, but they are responsible for maintaining the sewer. Other considerations is should the cost for maintenance be borne by the property owners, the city, or transitioned over time from the city to the property owners? I know that the city attorney has a comment related to cost for maintenance by the city once it becomes a private street. So Shannon, I don't know if you want to bring that up now?
Sure. The general rule is if it's a public street, it can be maintained with public funds, but if it's a private street, you can't use public funds in order to maintain the street. So in other words, once this, if this area were to go private, and if it were to become a private street, no city funds could be used to maintain the streets. It would have to be wholly borne by the gated community. That's it.
All right, thank you, Shannon. Who owns and maintains the infrastructure? What is the maintenance schedule and estimated maintenance cost? If the requirement is that the property owners pay for the maintenance, which sounds like it would, what happens if there are not sufficient funds to cover the costs? So staff recommendation, 100% of property owners shall agree to the conversion. All costs of conversion shall be paid by the property owners. There's going to be significant costs associated with converting. There's a lot of time associated with abandoning the right-of-way, reaching out to the utilities within the right-of-way to make sure that they understand and approve what's going on, that they get the easements that they need to be able to maintain their facilities. All gates shall comply with emergency access requirements. All costs of maintenance shall be paid by the property owners. An organizational mechanism shall be set up to ensure monetary obligations and necessary work is being carried out. Formation of an HOA shall have 100% approval to the property owners, and city shall retain ownership and maintenance of any water distribution and sewer collection lines within the neighborhood. So in terms of fiscal impact, if the gated community concept were approved and the neighborhood were to elect to convert to a gated community, the city would potentially no longer be responsible for maintenance activities within the neighborhood. And so the recommendation is to discuss the concept of gated neighborhoods and provide direction to staff. Basically, the two representatives have talked to other property owners within the subdivision to see if there's interest, and the response has been is there might be, but they want to fully understand what the requirements would be from the city. And so the discussion tonight is meant to be applied more globally if anyone were to come forward and request to convert their subdivision into a gated subdivision, but it would be more specific to this neighborhood in the immediate future.
Okay, thanks. Can you put up staff's recommendation? Perhaps that will help guide the, there we go. Okay. Staff's looking for direction from this council, and here we go.
I mean, looking at all your recommendations, I have no, I have no, I'm supportive of what you're recommending. Based on, if the community is interested in opening or establishing a gated community, that all of those recommendations, in my perspective, seem reasonable, and based on what Shannon said as well. You know, if it turns over to private property, then, you know, the taxpayers, our community should not have to pay for the expense for the wish of having a gated community. That's my point of view.
Thank you. Councilman Cardoza?
I'm going to approve staff's recommendation.
Okay. Councilman Shaw?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. My concerns really are the hierarchy level, because you mentioned what is already there for the existing gated communities, and we need to make sure that it is consistent all the way through. Have we had other community or areas that have been interested in converting from public to a gated private community?
This is the only subdivision, this is the only neighborhood that's come forward that I can recollect in the times that I've been with the city. We've had other subdivisions come forward at the very beginning when they're in the development phase, wanting to start out as a gated community. This is the first subdivision that I recollect requesting to convert.
Okay. Because with that, and I've said it many times, we need all housing. So we need everything from apartments and zero clearance all the way up to gated communities. So I support the concept, but I would like to see more concrete numbers gathered and presented. I would really like to see us have a workshop of all the property owners that would be affected, so that they all have an opportunity to share their concerns and know what the cost really is going to be, because there's a lot of guesses in this. And I kind of go back and forth with, do we know 100% of agreement or 90% of agreement? Because, again, back where we talked about Republic earlier, you know, everybody's got rights, and if we got 50 homes in there and one person doesn't want to, why should 49 be held hostage over one? But at the same time, the one has just as many rights as the other. So it's a big problem that we've got to work through. I would like to see us take what you've recommended, put some real numbers to it, and meet with those affected and the people that have brought this forward to us and have a workshop to really discuss it fully, so that we're all fully informed and fully engaged before we make any types of decisions, because we're making, we're making the presidents or other subdivisions that may decide this in the future, so we got to get it right.
To the Vice Mayor.
Go ahead.
This is different, because the other subdivisions in the future are, well, okay, you're right, okay, I'm thinking of new. Okay, you're thinking just of the old ones, okay. Well, but the state has the guidelines that these folks are going to have to abide by. So the main thing is they just need dumber figures is what they need, is what you're asking for. You just want to know how much it's going to cost them to do this.
Councilmember, that's part of it. But, you know, that all needs to be conveyed, because there's a lot of vagueness. What's the maintenance going to be? What's the cost of the conversion going to be? How is that going to be assessed? Through an HOA, or is it going to be attached to property taxes? And I mean, there's so many what-ifs that can happen in this, that I think we need to research all the numbers and have that workshop with them. That way, we have a roadmap, just like we did with the sewer attachments. We researched it, we brought it forward, and we've already had people connect to the city that was adjacent to the sewer lines, or, excuse me, water lines. And same type of concept here. Really take the time in this to vet it out and get the plan, so if other subdivisions want to come forward, we've got the roadmap.
Okay, my turn. First and foremost, I agree with most of staff's recommendations. My time with the city, I do recall other areas wanting to gate, and there were different reasons why that didn't happen. Some of those may have been fire access issues or emergency response issues. But I do agree with Councilman Shaw in regards to, there may be others that if they were aware that gated community option was available to them, may want to weigh in on this. And so I do agree. I think if you're going to make one standard, perhaps we need to just do a little bit of outreach to others who may be affected. 100% agree that once something does go gated, the cost should be borne by those that are behind the gate, and not necessarily borne by the rest of the taxpayers. I do have a question, and this was based upon a discussion you and I had on this matter earlier, which was, in this particular instance, there was a concern about the condition of the street. And we talked about the possibility of the city bringing the street up to a certain standard and then handing off continued maintenance to the property owners. Is that still the plan with this particular item?
We would, as part of the cost estimate, we could include that cost in there in terms of what it would cost to slurry seal the street, to, once it's turned over to them, it's in a certain condition. To address the workshop, I need some additional clarification in terms of, you know, what you're looking for, because the cost of conversion, while that can be more general in nature, the actual cost for maintenance is going to be different for every single street. And so to manage your expectations and understanding of what you're looking for, I would like more clarification as to what you would like the workshop to specifically cover.
What I'm looking for is to make sure that the affected property owners understand exactly what they're getting into. So we should be able to come up with some type of formula or spreadsheet that we can plug the streets and stuff in to figure out that this is what it's going to cost to do the conversion, this is what it's going to cost to maintain this on an ongoing basis. This is what it's going to cost to maintain this on an ongoing basis as a good foundation. Now, we realize it won't be absolute, but, you know, is it going to cost them $100,000 to gate it and bring everything up? Are we talking $20,000? That's two big, different numbers there.
Right. So you're talking specific to this subdivision, not general in nature?
The workshop, I was referring to specific to this, but it would be a process we would always use going forward. We would have the workshop for the affected community that wants to be gated, present them with numbers so that we know that they are accurate, the best numbers we have, and all of the residents that are going to be affected are fully informed of what they're facing.
Right. One of the things that we won't control is the gate. Each neighborhood will have, you know, we don't know what their estimate will be for the gate, the mechanism, all of that. We can work with them to try to get that. We can do our best to put those numbers together. And we can try to get the property owners there. Doesn't mean that they'll show up. And in this situation, in terms of how that will be done, whether it's virtual or in-person, we will have to address that. But then also managing this with other priorities of the department is something that we're going to have to evaluate.
Absolutely. And to your point, all we can do is make it available to the property owners. If they choose not to, we can't make them, but at least give them the opportunity to be informed. I thank you.
Through the Vice Mayor. Councilman Shaw, you made me think of some questions. You always do that so well to me. Thank you. I, I could see the, the concept of the workshop, why both of you may be considering that for homeowners or, or community members in areas, you know, development. But I think that goes into our develop, community development department where that could be a component that we offer in, when future housing is being considered to be built. Or if there's a consideration for conversion or changing a section of our community, because that goes back to the master plan and all those other areas. I interpreted what you said in there and in our conversations prior to this, Diana, is that all those things mentioned are going to be covered in the conversations with the parties that are interested in perhaps just continuing the dialogue. So is that accurate to say that you were going to cover those?
So the, the two representatives of the neighborhood, their request was to understand what council will require.
Okay.
So they can take that back to the property owners within the subdivision to see if there's even interest to move forward.
Right. Okay. So based on your recommendations, that, I guess one question comes up is how many homes are in that particular potential gated area?
Yeah.
Because that would let me know then if it is five community members or is it, you know, 10? How, how many are in that particular area? And how long would it take for the HOA formation to, to happen? You know? And there's, there's, there's a lot of timeline issues that partially, as a councilperson, I'm not necessarily needing to be into the details of it, but knowing that you and our team are walking through every single of those recommendations with those representatives and those individuals in that community who are interested in possibly establishing this with all the necessary information. And that includes the fiscal impact. And so you've noted to us, the fiscal impact for us as a city, because I asked you, it's like, we don't know. Because depending on what they want to pay and what we need to take care of and who ends up paying for what at the end. So your, your recommendations cover those areas in my understanding with our conversations. So I'm not necessarily keen about a workshop. I think those things need to be covered first and then talk about a workshop. But that could be through our community's developments group, not necessarily through this.
So?
Through the Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I did want to chime in. When I've seen these done, usually they don't go forward. I've seen dozens of these come forward in other jurisdictions. It is very rare, as you said, Vice Mayor, for them actually to go forward. One of the big reasons it's really difficult as a practical matter for communities to do this is not only do you have to get every single homeowner and sometimes spouses or sisters or somebody else to approve it, but you have to get every single bank and anybody else that has a lien on the property to subordinate this. So assuming that there's even one mortgage on each property, you have to have 60 people be able to sign off on that. Additionally to that, those lending institutions often are located outside the state and they transfer their loans back and forth. And that has to be run down as well. And by the time that you get the first ones done, sometimes they're still not, still not valid by the time you get the last ones done. Additionally, at the very least, there used to be a preliminary title report or title report called for every single property so the city can determine that all the lien holders and anybody with an interest in the property has also, is actually signing the subordination script. Then you have to make sure that the people signing it also have the authorization from their organization or their owners to sign the agreement. And it just turns into sometimes a very costly and timely affair. And I've seen these drag on for five or six years before they're actually got everybody together. And that was for a gated community of about 12 houses. So this is about three times the size of that. So just speaking of managing expectations, is it possible? Yes, it's certainly possible if the city council wants to do that. But I think, Councilman Shaw, your, your point about managing expectations and the costs and what this would actually take going in is something that would be worth flagging to the community before they start setting home. Thank you.
So if I, if I can speak sort of on behalf of the council, I think we are interested in a community or a group of, a neighborhood, if you will, that wants to gate. But the total burden of doing all this research and figuring everything, it really needs to be with them. Because I could see, based upon what the city attorney said and our own questions here, I like staff's recommendations. I think it needs to be transparent to those that are involved, what the time and the money and everything else is. I don't think that's a staff, a city's staff obligation. So I, what I, what I'm looking for us here at least is, yeah, we'd entertain the gated community concept, but the burden of figuring out all those things that, that you have identified here and then some really needs to be borne by those who are affected.
I, I support what you're saying, Vice Mayor. I, I would definitely support that recommendation.
Does that give you enough to go with?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Through the Vice Mayor, is there an opportunity for public comment on this item before we move to the next one?
I thought I was going to get by without you having to remind me about that, but I appreciate the fact that you did. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing or hearing none, do we have anybody online that would like to?
No one online.
Okay. Thank you, city attorney. All right. Appointment, we're moving to item 15, which is the appointment to the city of Yuba City Boards and Commissions, the Regional Housing Authority. This will be presented also by Diana Langley, our interim city manager.
I actually thought this was being presented by the mayor.
Well, I, I can stand in for you if you'd like to do that.
Yes, please.
Okay. So Mayor Harris and myself have interviewed a couple candidates for this Regional Housing Authority. The Regional Housing Authority has two members. One is a city councilperson, and I believe that's Councilman Cardoza right now. And it also then a public member at large. It is the recommendation of Mayor Harris and myself for your consideration and approval that Anthony Curlin be selected to the Regional Housing Authority. He, he interviewed very well, has a lot of passion, definitely has shown through his commitment to the city, the willingness and the ability to participate in a full level. We also really stressed the need for him to interact with us periodically along with Councilman Cardoza in regards to reports on what's happening at the Regional Housing Authority as our representative. So with your, what I would ask is, is approval by the city councils to accept the screening committee's recommendation for the appointment of Tony Curlin to the Regional Housing Authority.
I'll second that.
Through the mayor, before you, we go give him our, is he still on one of our other commissions?
He's on several commissions.
That's what I thought. Is he with our senior commission and?
And the personnel board.
Personnel board. Hey, Tony, why aren't you here?
He probably is listening.
I know. I know you're watching. Why aren't you here, Tony? I, I, I support that.
Public comment as well.
Public comment.
I'm heading there. I'm heading there. Do we have anybody in the public that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, hearing and seeing none, anything?
Nothing online. And Tony is online.
I figure.
But no comments.
Okay.
Through the mayor, before we do make the recommendation, Tony's come, Tony has been present at every Regional Housing Authority meeting for the last three and a half years. And since we've been on Zoom, he's been on Zoom with us also. He's part of the senior commission. They have representatives that go back to tell the senior commissioners what's going on with the housing. So he's going to be, he, he's not going to be, there's no learning process for him. He's going to be able to come in, be hands-on when he comes in. So I'd like to say congratulations, Tony. And we have a Zoom meeting tomorrow at noon. I hope to see you there, or see you on, on Zoom, yes. And with that, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve the city council screening committee's recommendation for the appointment to the Regional Housing Authority, Tony Curlin.
Can I get a second?
Yeah, second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed? So Mr. Curlin has been appointed. Okay, item 16, future agenda items. This is the opportunity to consider any items for future agendas. Councilwoman Espendola, any, anything for the future? Okay. Councilman Shaw? Councilman Cardoza?
I am good, sir.
All right. City clerk, are there any comments relating to the agenda items that may have come in during the meeting?
None.
None? Okay. No future agenda items. We'll move to item 17, which is the reports and communications. Following reports and communications are provided for council's info, information. No action can be taken on items under this section unless the council agrees to include it on a subsequent agenda. And we will begin with Councilmember Cardoza, please.
Reports, communications? That's two separate things. No, it isn't. You're correct. I'm sorry. Yes. It's, it hasn't been a long night. Okay. Yes. So the chamber was quiet the last couple of weeks. We, it's been very quiet. We'll be doing something this next two weeks. For meetings, I listened in on the LAFCO meeting. That was a very fun meeting to listen to. I'll let Councilwoman Espendola say what?
Councilwoman?
Yeah. Speak on that when it, when it comes up, tell what went on there. For, I'm going to go to community events. I passed out backpacks full of school supplies. And they also gave the kid, the children or kids food and supplies for school with the Western Farm Workers Association to help all the farmworkers, give them supplies for school. Even though school's not going on, the kids still need supplies to do their homework and stuff at home. I attended the, the virtual walk-in Alzheimer's this Saturday. It was here at our Promise Garden here on Veterans Memorial Way. It was virtual also. And then everybody went out and did their individual walks due to COVID. I had the honor of being on the virtual thing, hold the virtual broadcast. I had the honor of holding the orange flower. And that, that's what stands for a world without Alzheimer, Alzheimer's, Alzheimer's, excuse me. I did the tribute to 911 Memorial on the 10th Street Bridge Friday night. That was pretty exciting. We, we had a couple dozen folks on top of the bridge. There was also some down between Pluma Street and Wheeler. And then Marysville had some on their side. You know, had the flags out there. They thought it was a Trump rally, but it was for 9/11. We had a lot of cars honking. Our fire departments came through, Sutter County, Yuba County Fire Departments, Marysville, Yuba City came by and honked their horns with us. Also, I attended our farmers' markets last couple of weeks, both museums on Wednesdays and our town center on Saturday mornings. Town center is going to be still going until October 17th. And the museum, due to COVID, or excuse me, doing this, I'll find out tomorrow night when the ending is on it. I'll give that report at the next council meeting. And then we had a exciting three days, four days at our Yuba City Fairgrounds due to the Butte and Yuba County fires. We had an evacuation center at our fairgrounds. I helped out with the evacuees. I assisted with, I helped assist with the Yuba County Office of Emergency Services, the Red Cross, and the Yuba Center Domestic Animal Disaster Assistance. I was there helping. They were short, everybody was shorthanded, last minute thing. So we had 500 folks in our fairground parking lot, excuse me, Thursday, Wednesday morning. And so I, they were shorthanded, so I helped sign folks in, find out where they were from, Butte County, Yuba County, letting them know, getting a head count, making sure that they had the proper necessities that they need in our community. And then I also, when I was helping out, I let folks know where they can get meals in our community because due to COVID, our service groups weren't allowed to bring food onto the fairgrounds. So the county provided Visa cards, but it didn't get till towards the end of the day. And so a few of the folks, I gave them areas that they could go to get stuff. And I also want to give a special thank you to the Brick Coffee House in Marysville. They provided lunch for all the evacuees for Thursday through Saturday. The, we were, we had 500 people there Wednesday morning, and by Saturday, everybody was placed. A lot of folks got to go back home. A few folks got to go back home. But everyone was due to the Red Cross and Yuba County. They were placed in, the seniors were placed in hotels. And then the other places, the other folks, they were sent back up to Yuba County to get taken care of. And they were also found places, also up in Brownsville when, where they could be. They were also able to go back home up there, which they're probably going to be coming back down here in the, in the close and near future. Let's see, what else do we have here? We still need dog walkers at the fairgrounds. If we had a love volunteers, you must be at least 18 years old. They walk dogs eight noon and from four to seven daily until the animals get to get back to their owners. So if anybody's interested in that, I would really appreciate that. Like I said, it was the, which fire department was going to come in, chief? I just lost thought. Cal Fire was going to come into the fairgrounds. So the evacuees in the fairgrounds Wednesday morning had to move three times because Cal Fire came in there and said they were going to take just the main area. Then they said they were going to take the main area in Franklin. Then they said they were going to take the main area of Franklin and C Street. So the poor evacuees had to move. And they ended up, they ended up on Garden Highway and Second Street is where they ended up. But it was just a, a big strain that morning with the evacuees. I really felt, you know, helping them and getting them from one place to another, you tell somebody, we'll go here, you're set. They go and they get set up, and then you go back 30 minutes now or later saying, oh, I'm sorry, you have to go somewhere else. So it was very nerve-wracking that morning, but we all made it. We made it through it. Habitat Humanity offered parking over in their lot in Marysville. So a few went over there. But overall, the community came together. We all worked together greatly. And like I said, the folks are either back home or they're in hotels being taken care of at this time. And that is it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Espendola.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Cardoza, for helping with the evacuations and all the work that you've done. I, I think I was going to start in a different location, but I'm going to start here. And I just want to take the moment to thank, thank our firefighters and our law enforcement, but particularly our firefighters and our chief. Do you mind standing up for a little bit? I just want to acknowledge our chief. He's and I know some of our firefighters are still out there helping with these really strenuous, dangerous, and deadly, unfortunate fires. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the hard work, the risk, and the dedication, not only by you or your team, but also your families, your loved ones, because they're the ones who also sacrifice and give in these moments when you're out there. And I am very encouraged because we're also helping our firefighters were recognized about mental health and the need for taking care of their mental health and how our department is leading in, in that discussion and supporting.
And like I said, the folks are either back home or they're in hotels being taken care of at this time. And that is it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Espendola.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Cardoza, for helping with the evacuations and all the work that you've done. I think I was going to start in a different location, but I'm going to start here. And I just want to take the moment to thank our firefighters and our law enforcement, but particularly our firefighters and our chief. Do you mind standing up for a little bit? I just want to acknowledge our chief. And I know some of our firefighters are still out there helping with these really strenuous, dangerous, and deadly, unfortunately, fires. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the hard work, the risk, and the dedication. Not only by you or your team, but also your families, your loved ones. Because they're the ones who also sacrifice and give in these moments when you're out there. And I am very encouraged because we're also helping our firefighters were recognized about mental health and the need for taking care of their mental health and how our department is leading in that discussion and supporting each other. Because when you're facing emergencies such as these fires or others, the strain, and Vice Mayor, you would know this really well, the strain and the daily grind of this can get to a person's well-being and their own mental health. And so I thank you so much, Jesse, for all the work that you're doing and your team in these times. So thank you with that. I'm also, I'm very proud of the two proclamations that we gave out this evening, gentlemen, in our city for recognizing what is something that I find in our city so beautiful is the diversity in recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month and the beautiful conversation about the Punjabi individual who did all what he did to sacrifice for the well-being of others. So I'm very proud of those two present proclamations that we had earlier in the meeting. Now, we all have different assignments. We have committee assignments, and some of them are really glamorous. I mean, Regional Water Agency, but what can we do without water? I mean, we need water for everything. I mean, there's so much to that. And Diana and I, Diana always encourages me and supports me and lets me understand, helps me understand, I should say, what is water resources? What does this look like? And thankfully, we have one of the best in the state that she can just get me to the right points and say, this is what you need to know, Grace. This, no, the city only needs this. The city doesn't need these additional areas. But we're going to have a 30-minute meeting with the director, right, of water, just to kind of give an input about the issues of water. And we have a couple of grants, right? Is it under this one or a different one? I'm getting confused, right? Okay. So that was one meeting. And then our Vice Mayor is so generous. He loves to give. He was out of town for, or I don't know, he's a busy man. And so I went to the LAFCO meeting, which was virtual. And I learned quite a bit how challenging the virtual platform can be for part of our commissioners. I was identified as Commissioner Boom Garden. And I was, my picture was there. I was in, they saw me, but they still identified me as Commissioner Boom Garden. So that was fun. Anyhow, there's a workshop, right, that's happening in November? Or it's scheduled for November? Yeah. The vote schedule. Oh, wait, the workshop occurred, which was the report that our team put together. And interesting workshop, but the vote is on November. And I have nothing else to say, but one last very short little quote that I thought was really impactful, that made me think of things beyond what I normally. "Today, all lives have equal value. Not all have equal opportunity." Melinda Gates. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Shaw.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Since our last meeting, as I said earlier, I have been out of state at our ranch back in Alabama, working and enjoying blue skies and high school football, college football, and some sense of normalcy. So I came back really refreshed. But I would be remiss if I didn't cover a couple of things real quick. And I'm going to get back to our first responders. Because I go back to, as I said earlier, I'm a veteran. I was on shift the night the Desert Storm started. I remember when we launched the first missile from the ships and started doing all the things that we had to do that I can still not talk about. But spring forward, 9/11. I was out of town when that occurred. But I could still remember, there's points and times that every one of us, every generation has it. You go back to our parents' generation, and it was the Cuban Missile Crisis. People can remember exactly what was going on during that time. The morning of 9/11, I can still tell you very vividly everything that was going on. And I know that there was that sense, even though I wasn't in the military anymore, that just started rising up. And I wanted to do what I could do because someone messed with my family, my people, America. While I was gone, that happened here again. And thank you to our men and women in the fire department and in the police department. I called in because I was working on the ranch, went back to my cellphone. I had like 35 text messages. It was like, holy smokes. California did get on fire, and here we are again. And I just want to say thank you to all the men and women in your two departments. Because just as we did in Desert Storm and on 9/11, you guys were asked and called and stretched thin, and you guys were running into danger to save people. So on behalf of all the residents of the city, all the residents up in the affected areas, I just want to extend my thank you to all of the men and women that serve in both your departments. Because you guys went in and did some good work. And I know it was both departments that was asked to send support. And please pass along our thanks and gratitude. Because it's very simple. When we all get to stay home and feel protected, you guys are some of the first ones in that runs into danger. So with that, I will wrap it up. My committee assignments will be picking back up this week, starting on Thursday, and the different ad hoc committees and stuff we got on. So remember those affected. Remember 9/11. Remember what we went through back during Desert Storm. Thank you.
Thank you. First, again, thank you to all of you who chose to come join us here at the meeting this evening and for speaking and sharing your thoughts with us. Again, Councilman Shaw said it as good as anybody could have said it. You know, we are desperately trying to get back to whatever normal's going to be and get our city open. There are certain things that we have absolute control over. You've pointed some of those out, taking those under submission. There are other things that we unfortunately do not have control over, though we wish we did. And as a council, this council is very committed to this city, the citizens that we serve, including the businesses. So again, thank you for being here tonight, and hopefully we can continue to get more people inside here. Thank you, Councilwoman, for attending the LAFCO meeting. That does have some significance as it relates to the growth of the city. This, the workshop that's coming on the Municipal Services Review in conjunction with Boeck Stewart Master Plan. As far as committee work, other than that, we are in the process of moving along with the hiring of a new city manager. That process is underway. And though we do not have an exact timeline, that should be forthcoming in the next couple of weeks, and we will be able to announce that. I do want to, as others have, recognize the work of both the police and the fire departments, especially as it relates to their support of efforts in Northern California. I don't think most people realize that when you get that call to rush to assist in an evacuation or in a fire suppression operation, the impact that that has not only on you personally, but the family and those that are behind, that have to fill in behind. So I know in this most recent incident, we had police officers that were requested to go support evacuation efforts. I know our fire department was out hopping from incident to incident all over Northern California. And they, all of those folks were in harm's way. And, you know, the courage of those folks and the support of their family and the support of the residents of the city, I know it was appreciated when I was doing the work. And I hope both of you can communicate back to those that you are leading, how much we value the fact that they were willing to respond and did so on a moment's notice, per se, dropped what they had to do and got up there. So the unfortunate thing, at least about fires, is we haven't even really gotten into the fall fire season. And we're seeing these catastrophic fires. And I assume that, unfortunately, that we will be called upon again to support our neighbors. And I know we will do so admirably. You know, this one's a little rugged. There's incidents that are happening throughout the United States, and thankfully, we're not seeing that happen here in Uba City. But I want to note the unfortunate attack on the two officers in the LA Sheriff's Department. And it was particularly disturbing to me to see what's going on in the country. And, you know, I admire the diversity of our community. I admire the fact that more often than not, we're able to have civil communication and are tolerant of each other's views. And I'm just hoping against, you know, what it seems to be mounting odds, that we can continue to exist here in Uba City as insulated from some of that as possible. I cannot imagine going to work as a police officer these days. I just can't, you know? And knowing that, you know, you're here to protect us, but there are others that are out attacking you. So I wasn't a police officer. I worked alongside them. And I just, you know, again, have a lot of respect. Thank you for your officers and their willingness to take care of us here in Uba City. I think it speaks a lot to them. I want to close tonight on behalf of our council in memory of Ramon Flores. Ramon Flores was the father of County Supervisor Dan Flores and Dan's brother David Flores, who's very active in the community as well. Mr. Flores was a very important part of the community, and he passed away recently. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Again, thank you to all that came, thank to all that listens, and thanks to all of you for serving the citizens of Uba City.